Good evening. Welcome to the June 24th Cabarrus County Board of Education 2023-24 Budget Meeting. The Board has just reconvened in open session from closed session. If you will, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll move to 5.01 where we'll adopt the agenda. I call for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Does that move? I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. Is there any discussion about the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the agenda as presented say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. Board members will move to 6.01, Board Chair Comments. I'd just like to acknowledge the work of our Finance Department and Mr. Phil Penn for completing the budget process for 2023-24 tonight and then their diligent work efforts on the budget for the school year 24-25. Thank you, Mr. Penn. We'll move to 7.01, our final budget amendments for 23-24 with Mr. Phil Penn. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for those comments. They're much appreciated, and I'm sure my team appreciates them as well. I'm going to take you through a number of different topics tonight. First on the list is closing out 23-24. Ms. Spade is passing around some late-breaking news that developed around 3:30 this afternoon. I'll get to that in a second. But as you saw in the budget amendment memo that was passed out through Board Docs over the weekend, budget amendment number seven includes a couple of different things. As I mentioned at the June 3 meeting, the state dropped about $650,000 on us, kind of a late appropriation or a late allotment, rather, and encouraged CFOs around the state to move locally funded expenses into that allotment, which we did. So it was kind of they realized that receiving that money three weeks before the fiscal year ended, we had to move fairly quickly. I also did point out in the memo that we, in federal Fund III, had an increase of about $477,000. Those are tied to specific allotments for the IDEA grant, Title I school grant, and ARPASR III, the certifications, and you'll see how those are tied out as well within that space. Special revenue saw the increase of about $33,000 compared to where we were in the month of June when I presented a few weeks ago, and you'll see the funding sources where that came from, Drivers Ed, the Early College Incubator Grant, and the Tobacco Trust Fund Grant as well. So after incorporating all that, we were at $519.2 million for the 23-24 year, and as you'll see in the final paragraph of that memorandum, taking into account the surprise amendment, a surprise allotment, rather, taking into account the purchase orders that we closed out as part of our fiscal year-end close, the cumul of effect of all the vacancies that we had during the year, and then all the efforts that we've been doing since November to close the deficit that we had identified back then, we're now sitting somewhere between, what we believe is a surplus of between four and four and a half million dollars for the year. Now, I pretty strongly caution that, you know, we need to get through audited financials. Typically, we see those and share those with the Board in October, but that's directionally where we think we're going to land at this point, right? What Ms. Spade just passed out to you is something we identified at around 3:30 this afternoon. We have a late-breaking news in our federal grants. We had an item for less than $1,200 that we needed to account for. You'll see the revenue and expenses and the two various PRCs that are associated with that. I'm calling that budget amendment 7A, just to differentiate it from what the package is, but it basically increases within our federal funds a total of $1,181, which apparently we need to account for. I will talk to our auditors about what materiality looks like to say, did we really need to bring $1,181 to the Board? But erring on the side of caution, here it is in front of you. That would then push our total federal budget for the year 23-24 to 28,381,056, and our district-wide funding across all sources, $519,165,879. All of the other items that are within the package that I presented in the larger memo are just ticking and tying out all the budget lines, because what you can't do is you can't wind up with a negative in a fund, you can't have a negative in a PRC, and you can't have a negative in a program code. So what we did is we realigned things to make sure that as we need to push things back to the end of the year, as an example, we'll have legal bills for the month of June that will come in in July that we will push back to the month of June. We will have utility bills that we're incurring during the month of June that we need to push back once we reach July. It's a way of ensuring through all those transfers that we have the money in the right place to close out the school year. You can wind up with more in an expense line, you can have a surplus in the expense line, you can't have a negative in the expense line. So all of those pages of transfers that you see address all of that. But that's basically where we see 23-24 ending, and so I'm asking for the Board's approval on amendment number seven and amendment number 7A tonight.
Any questions, Board members, about this? Mr. Walter?
Again, I'm thinking you just sent it out, so I hadn't seen it prior to the meeting as of right now. So how does it compare to last year? I mean, what is our budget? How did we end this year compared to last year?
Well, last year you would have ended with a surplus of, I believe, around $3 million, give or take.
Okay, so we've got a little bit more this year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay?
So with the surplus that we have, now, I know that when we were in the hole, five million?
Eight and a half.
Okay, give or take. We had a lot of departments cutting back. So is the surplus now going to go back to those departments so that they will get reimbursed for the funds that they had to cut?
Prior to the end of the year, where there was an opportunity to, we did go back to several departments and say, if you need to push this through, push it through before June 30. We've addressed some of that already.
Okay.
I think the bigger drivers of the surplus, as I mentioned, were the vacancies that we had had, and I know in the superintendent's report each week, you saw the number of vacancies that we were carrying all year long. And, as I said, as part of the closeout, releasing funds off purchase orders that were already encumbered. So what happens is typically that will roll back into fund balance, and then there will be a question for the Board, Dr. Kapiki and I, to say, what do we do with that fund balance going into next year? But that won't be decisions that we make until we, after we have audited financials.
Okay. And then, real quick, since the county did pass their budget, when will the increases in salary for our employees start? When will that be effective?
So what Dr. Williams and I talked about, and he's not here tonight, but I think I can speak on his behalf, is we're looking to see what the state does with increases right now, right? And in addition, we also know that the increases that were passed as part of last year's legislative session cannot go into effect yet. It was an intent, it was not an actual budget item. So what has to happen is we need a state budget for 23, excuse me, 24-25 to implement what was even in last year's budget as passed by the state. So right now, we're sort of sitting and seeing how the state budget plays out, at which point we can go do the implementation and make everything retroactive to July 1st of 2024, to be specific.
Okay, so just to clarify, whatever and when we decide it will be retroactive back to July 1st, do you have any idea, though?
July 1st of that's about to happen, just to be clear.
Right, right, this July 1st.
Right.
Right. But if we were, and the reason I'm asking is because there's employees that would like to know when they're going to have a bump in their salaries.
Yep.
And so I do think it's really important for us to give them some sort of expectation of when they're going to start seeing that, even though it's going to be retro.
So the messaging we've been pushing out through the Cabinet for a couple of weeks now is exactly what I just shared with you, acknowledging the fact that the county approved it last Monday, and that there's some work to be done, but we want to see how the state budget passes as well to say, okay, we're going to do this all in one shot, as opposed to a piecemeal activity that makes it very burdensome from trying to implement from a payroll perspective.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Sandage?
So Laura, you asked my question, thanks. I just wanted to say that the onus is on us at this point, to clarify when the staff will get a bump in their salary. I just want to put that out there, I don't need to answer. I appreciate you clarifying that. The other thing that I was going to ask is, this says final amendment, final two amendments. Could there be another final amendment, is my question, and I'm guessing you're going to tell me yes?
If there is, I don't know about it. How about that?
Did you know about this one?
I, 3:30 this afternoon, I got out about it. No, I think we're about as done as we can be, to be candid, and one of the things we've been really stressing within the finance team is sweep through everything, check every day, and that's how we turned up this $1,100 item that we needed to address. And again, I keep coming back to whether or not there's even a need to bring $1,100 to the Board. Is that something that could have just been dismissed as immaterial to the results for the year? And I will raise that question with the auditors. I can tell you definitively, as of right now, I don't anticipate any additional amendments.
So what happens if there are, like, two more final amendments? Will you do this song and dance again?
Song and dance? That's a little rough.
Well, I mean, it just, this is 007A, and I just, I don't know, I don't know, it just, I don't know, it just seems like really weird right now that it's coming at this point and then we have to approve it again. What if it happens tomorrow? What happens at that point?
Deal with that if it happens.
We're going to cross that bridge when we get to it.
We will cross that bridge when we get to it. Now, what I will tell you is, one of the things that has arisen in talking to my staff is that having this meeting on the 24th is too early, so we will be looking for a later meeting next year, just for that purpose, right?
I'm glad that we've learned something from it, because it's a little scary getting an amendment, like, right before a board meeting and not being able to process it. Thank you for all of the work that you've done. I know I sound a little bit critical right now, but, you know, this wasn't expected, so thank you.
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you. Just to go back to the salary conversation, to clarify, we are, we are, it's not on us, it's on the General Assembly. We are waiting to, because, just to explain, what the county has approved, our county commission, they agree to percentage, but because we don't know what the new salary will be, you can't adjust a percentage without knowing what that new amount for the salary will be. So we're waiting for the General Assembly to decide between a 2% and a 4% for our teachers.
So what we're looking for, and again, the salary study will not impact teachers, right? Because the teachers are certified. But even within the classified staff that the salary study does impact, there are now two competing proposals. One that says you continue what was proposed last year, which is a 3% increase for classified staff, and there's another one that says it's a 4% increase for classified staff. So the work that was done as part of the salary study was to reposition people on salary tables, meaning you're on this table, you're at step, whatever step you're on, and adjusting those steps to reflect the amount of the increases that we wanted to give to people. But the tables will change by whatever percentage that the actual salaries go up. In other words, if you have a list of 10 different salaries at 10 different steps, and the increase is 3%, or if it's 4%, you've got to increase even all of those steps by that percentage point, right? And that's kind of where we are. Now, we don't think implementation takes a long time, but the issue is that we're kind of at the mercy of the state trying to figure out, what's the right number?
And so whenever the state passes its final budget, which can be any time, then we'll be able to say what that new number is, and then we will pay them from starting, retro from July 1. So they might not see that money in their check, October, December, again, we're at the mercy of-
If I had a crystal ball to say what the folks in Raleigh were going to do, I'd tell you, but I do not.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, back to the salary study again, so this is the one, there's two parts to that, one was raised in supplement, 1%, and then there was a-
No, supplement was unrelated to the-
Okay, but there's a salary study that, when did we start that? It was last year sometime?
I think the work started to be conducted last year.
So I don't think I've seen the actual report. Do we have that report somewhere where we can see it? Is it out? Where is that at?
Yeah.
I can get that to the Board by the end of the day tomorrow. We do have that.
And I think we did prepare some summary documents around those lines.
Yeah, so-
But we had to make an estimate to come up with the money that we're asking the county to-
Correct, but there was a secondary document that came out a couple of months ago.
Yeah, Mr. Walter, I could send that back out to the Board tomorrow.
Okay.
It's not a problem. Dr. Williams is on vacation this week, so if I, I'm positive to have the summary document filled with reference I can send back out to the Board. If not, I'll send you a notice and let you know when Dr. Williams is back next week we can get it to you.
But there's a summary document, and then there's actual report, right? Is there that report available?
I have to double-check with Dr. Williams on that report. I know the tables and the numbers and the amounts for the salary changes are there, and I believe we did share, I know we shared that with the Board, but I'll send that back out again.
Okay, I mean, if you go back to 2018, we did have a report, I did go through some of those bands and things. So I'd like to compare that to what we've just done now, so, thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
So I just want to clarify my statement. The salary study, we were talking about that we were waiting on the county to approve their budget. That's what I'm talking about. When I talk about, the onus is on us. We've been saying we've been waiting on the county to approve their budget, and if we're communicating that, now, in my opinion, the onus is on us, if that's what we're waiting on. So the question that Board Member Laura asked was in relation to where we are in getting that, because we had been stating we were waiting on the county to approve their budget. So that's what I want to state, that I'm clarifying from earlier, from our point from earlier. That's why I'm saying the onus is on us, y'all. Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay?
I'm asking this out of just strictly concern for the legislature and how long that this could possibly take, and my concern for our employees. Is it possible, I understand that we don't know exactly yet, but is it possible for us to err on the side of 3% and allow these employees the increase until we know, I mean, if they bump it up to 4%, that's great, then we'll bump it up another percent, but that way so they could go ahead and start getting some of their money? Because it's going to be very difficult for some of these employees to continue on with the way that they, just their own livelihood at this point, without being able to get a salary increase, and it makes me a little bit fearful for people might leave.
I can appreciate that, and I can appreciate employees that have been waiting on this for some time. My only counter to that would be there are other things in the state budget proposals that give me pause, that I think we need to see the totality of what comes out before we move forward, but I'm happy to take that conversation you just proposed up with Dr. Kapiki and Dr. Williams when he returns and see where we go from there.
Any other comments? Okay. Board members, I call for a motion to approve the final budget amendment for 2023-24 as presented.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Tredaway, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the final budget amendments are approved.
Appreciate that.
We will move to 7.02 with our continuing budget resolution.
All right, so in your package, you would have seen a one paragraph, one sentence budget resolution that continues to let us operate for 24-25, pending such time that the state and others approve their budgets for the 24-25 year. As you'll probably remember, we typically come to the Board in the fall time period when we can present the total view of what the budget's going to look like. At this point, the only thing that we have approved with some certainty is the local piece in the county. And what this basically says is that will account for things in the right place until we have the appropriate appropriations dropped to us from the other parties.
Any questions, Board members? Mr. Walter?
Are you going to give us an update on the local, what was approved, what wasn't, based on our ask? I mean, we asked for quite a bit, I'm sure we didn't get all of it. Can we get a summary?
The quick summary would be, when we looked at the continuation budget, everything was funded, so that was the good news. The bad news was, if you can call it that, is when we looked at the expansion piece, the only things that they approved were the $2.6 million for the salary study and the $1.8 million for the additional increase in the certified supplement, to go from 12% to 13%. Nothing else on the expansion request was approved. On the capital side, we do not have final decisions around that. What I will tell you is, the tax rate that got approved last Monday would have included construction of the two elementary schools, it would have included the $2.5 million that we needed to complete the renovations of the one school, and it would have included what we requested for the Promethean boards, for the security cameras, and for the, one more, there's one more, it'll come back to me. They also approved all 36 of the projects below half a million dollars, which was a bit of a surprise, because they just took the whole list and approved it. What they did not approve was anything in the $500,000 and up category, so everything in that space where we had come up with our top 10 within that, nothing on that got approved.
You maybe at our next meeting, give us a comparison of all that stuff?
I can. What I've been waiting on is that they have not actually brought forward their budget resolution for the capital piece, and that's happening in July. I wanted to see what was finalized on that before I presented something here.
Okay, so we're waiting on the capital piece?
Correct. So the funding theoretically is there for what I just relayed to you, but they actually haven't done the budget resolution around the capital piece. That happens at the July meeting.
That goes back to your last item there about the computer leases, right?
What's that?
The computer leases on one of our next items.
Well, the computer leases are not funded. That was part of the issue, right?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Board members, I call for a motion to approve the continuing budget resolution as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the continuing budget resolution is approved.
Wonderful, thank you.
We'll move to 7.03 with the Cabarrus-Canaples City Activity Bus Maintenance Agreement.
So some of you may know, and Dr. Bowers is here in the audience as well, can help with some of this if needed, we perform the maintenance activities on behalf of Canaples City Schools' activity buses, and there has been, in effect, what it was essentially a handshake agreement for a number of years around us doing that activity. It was originally charged out as a flat rate per year. There were some challenges to whether or not the flat rate actually reflected the work that was being performed, and so there was a tacit agreement for the 23-24 year to charge a rate of $25 an hour for the activity that we were doing on behalf of those buses. And our argument to KCS, and they agreed, that $25 an hour isn't going to really substantially make up what we need to charge for this to be cost-effective for us. So the state very recently changed their rate to $31 an hour. So we're now adopting for the 24-25 period, that $31 rate that we will charge off to Canaples City Schools. And what we're proposing is a three-year agreement as opposed to a one-year agreement, which is where it's been before, with the intent that by May 31st, we'll be negotiating whatever the rate is that's going to be for the upcoming year. So this was actually very collaborative. The whole discussion took a very short amount of time. They're on board with the changes, they understand the need that we have to raise the rate, and they're actually taking this to their Board this coming Thursday. So it's a fairly straightforward, I think it's a two or three-page agreement that we're proposing to move forward with, it just memorializes what we're all agreeing to.
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you. So to clarify, each May, that rate could change?
Yeah, we'll negotiate by May 31st what the upcoming year will look like in terms of the hourly rate.
Okay, so the three-year is that we're agreeing to this process, but the 31 is for this year?
The 31 is for this year, and it actually says in the agreement that we'll negotiate it to a mutually agreeable number in each of the subsequent two years by May 31st.
Mr. Walter?
This is just more of a change, can we get rid of this Party A and Party B and put CCS and KCS? It looks like something we've downloaded from the Internet, forgot to put in the right parties for that. Let's make it clear. I don't see a reason why you have to do that. Just make it easily readable and understandable for anyone who wants to see it. That's my suggestion. Mr. Eisenhower, thoughts on that?
I think that's fine. I think you could approve the contract tonight, and I can, or Bill can make that change.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Walter?
I'll make the motion that we approve this contract.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor of approving this maintenance agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that agreement is approved. We'll move to 7.04 Maintenance and Repair Agreement for 24 through 29.
Yes. So back in 2019, there was an agreement created, it was a three-way agreement between Cabarrus County Schools, Canaples City Schools, and Cabarrus County regarding the various maintenance of buildings and grounds around the schools. Obviously, that agreement is expiring on June 30th of this year, so it was a need for a successor agreement. Working closely with the Facilities and Maintenance Department, what was mostly changed out of this was the deletion of the reference to maintenance of the school parks, which is actually being done by the county right now. That is not something under our purview, so that's been removed. We cleaned up a little bit of the exhibit around what school facilities exist at this point. And then the biggest change was, we just updated the minimum that they're allowed to allot to us for maintenance to reflect the 23-24 actual rate. So what would have been in the expiring agreement would have been what they were giving to both parties back in 2018-19. So we've taken that forward by another five years at this point. Are proposing that we do another five-year agreement that, again, just kind of outlines what everybody's responsible for. Again, KCS intends to take the agreement to their Board on Thursday, and then it'll be, once the two districts have signed off, we need to take it to the county for their blessing as well.
And Mr. Penn, correct me if I'm wrong, this matches and mirrors the timeline as it did five years ago, correct?
To my understanding, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any questions, Board members? Mr. Walter?
I'm seeing that we're not, so the county is taking care of parks at our school?
The school parks, yes.
School parks?
Yes.
But they're not reducing the amount, the reimbursement or the numbers in this contract?
Correct.
Do you expect pushback for that?
I do not.
Because there's less that we're doing for the-
They've actually already agreed that a number for this year, I'm only using 23-24's number, so.
Okay, so they're okay with the number?
It's a floor funding level, not as specified. They can't go below that number.
Right, but we're just taking out a lot of-
And the school parks allotment was tiny, in any case.
It's what?
Was tiny, in any case.
But there were a number of them, or at least there was in the last contract?
No, what I mean is that the dollars that they allotted for the school parks were very tiny, so.
Ms. Lindsay?
I just wanted, Chuck, I just wanted to make sure this was okay with you. I know this is-
He's the primary author.
Yeah, this is kind of your thing, so I just want to make, you're good with this?
Yes, we had many discussions with the Canaples.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I call for a motion for us to approve the 2024 through 29 Maintenance and Repair Agreement. I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this agreement is approved. We'll move to 7.05, the Apple Lease Agreement.
All right. So as was noted earlier, and you'll see in the memo that I provided, the county did not fund the $5 million we had requested for device refreshes into next year. That's going to force us to be a little bit creative in terms of how we do this going forward. As I noted in the memo, we have a large tranche of iPads which are used in the earlier grades that will no longer be supported by Apple, which means you can no longer upgrade the iOS on the computer, which means if you continue to use it on your network, you have a network exposure that your security vulnerability is on those devices. So we got into a discussion with Apple, who has proposed what I think is a very favorable lease in terms of the financials, to replace 1,500 new MacBook Airs laptops for the staff, and over 5,300 iPads for students, and that's going to be in kindergarten and first grade. The total cost of the lease is just about $4.8 million. You'll see in the memo how I broke it out into four payments of a little bit over, just under $1.2 million. The effective rate of the lease is less than 1/10 of 1%, because what's happening is, Apple Financial Services can use the balance sheet that Apple has, and I looked it up, Apple's sitting on $67 billion in cash and equivalents right now, so this cash that they can buy down the rate, and I would equate it to getting cash back at closing on your mortgage, right? Where you have, it changes the effective rate, right? So the effective rate that we will be paying on this lease is less than 1/10 of 1%. So it's very favorable to us. The, otherwise, the stated rate's 5 and 1/2, so you can see how much Apple is contributing to this deal. Part of the reason we're bringing it to you tonight isn't so much about the pricing, Part of the reason we're bringing it to you tonight, uh, isn't so much about the pricing, but it's about the timing, uh, about when we can get these, the, 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 uh, devices in. Uh, if we move by the end of this week, we have an opportunity to bring those devices in for the start of the school year. Um, in addition, uh, Apple's indicated to us that the tranche of devices that we have are, uh, appealing to resellers that are out there, and have put us in contact with three different resellers, and based on Apple's belief on similarly sized transactions, they think that we can offset, uh, almost half of the transaction value for the first year's lease payment, which would then knock it down to about $595,000. Now, not all of that's funded. It's a bit of a go-get for us, uh, but it solves part of the issue in terms of what we need for devices for the remaining year. I don't want to overstate the ability of the finance department or mine, but you know, we're pretty good about finding money when we need to, right? Uh, that's what we did this past year, and so we know we have a little bit of a go-get. And if I'm being completely transparent, I'm buying time to figure out then what do we do for years two, three, and four for this lease, right? Uh, cause we know we need devices. Uh, so I think there is a strategy discussion around where do we deploy these devices going forward in terms of future tranches that we have, and what's the funding that supports that? Uh, cause if we are fully committed to a one-to-one device, uh, student-to-device ratio, uh, we need a means of paying for it. Uh, this one happened to be fortuitous in terms of the timing. Mr. Eisenhower and his firm had an opportunity to review the lease. They provided feedback to us today, and, uh, Mr. Eisenhower, you can speak for yourself, but I didn't think you saw anything that would prevent us from signing the lease at this point.
That, that's right, yeah, we went through it, and Dylan and his team did a nice job with it. There is one piece to it that's a bit unique, and it's related to the financing part.
Microphone?
Sure. They do want an opinion letter, um, from our law firm on there, um, which is a little unique for technology leases, um, but Apple obviously is a bit unique. And so, uh, we have an opinion counsel at our firm who, who reviews those, so they, they are in the midst of reviewing that, and that's usually just a negotiation, um, with Apple, so we'll take care of that. But as far as the master agreement itself, it, it looked pretty standard.
Any questions, board members?
Thanks for doing that.
Mr. Treadaway?
I, to echo your sentiments, uh, to, to, to be kept an obvious, computers and technology are critical to what we do nowadays. There, it's not fluff, it's not something, and so I think it, it behooves us to, as, again, to echo what your sentiments is, that we find within our system, a way to make this happen every year, so we're not going through this kind of, um, response to, 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 uh, other, uh, resource avenues. And I think, I would think our instructional team would appreciate that too, so that they can make plans, uh, going forward. So I think this is maybe, um, uh, a message to us.
Ms. Lindsay?
So I'm, I'm going to have a little bit of an opposite opinion, um, on, on that, Sam, but, and I say this, I, I know we went through COVID, and all the kids had to go home with some kind of device in order to be able to do this, but I feel like we've put so much emphasis on these devices now. I can't really justify, in my mind, spending this kind of money on kindergarten and first graders to have their own devices. I just think there's a certain time we need to be, I, I get it, we've got to introduce them to technology, it's important, it's the wave of the future, right? But I feel like we have done so much now to completely just put so, so much technology on these kids, that they're losing a lot of the basic skills that they need, um, in kindergarten and first grade. And so, I think we could do ourselves a lot by, by saving some money, um, on these for kindergartners and first graders, and go back to the system where they used to have a computer lab, and I'm not saying we have to install computer labs into all of the schools again, but kids don't need this repetitive on their, the machines constantly all the time. Um, I just, I don't think it's the, it's the right, uh, moves for us to, to be continuing that way, but that's just my, that's just my opinion.
Ms. Escobar?
I hear what you're saying. I'll just say that, um, I would much rather have five-year-olds and six-year-olds learn how to, um, use a device. And it's an, it's an, it's an issue of, um, access. Um, there'll be the haves and the have-nots, and so, yes, there's lots of kids in our community that will have their parents' devices, or they'll have devices at home, and then there'll be kids that won't be exposed to it until second grade. And, um, I just think that, um, if you, you're going to provide a quality education for all kids, all kids should have access to devices. And, um, the reality is, is they need to know how to use them in third grade, um, they need to know how to read, they need, and you, you have to start when they start. So I, um, it's an, it's an issue of access, um, for everyone.
Ms. Sandage?
Um, can you explain to us, or can somebody out there explain to us what, um, the iPads or the Apple devices are being used for, for the teachers and for the, um, kindergartners and first graders, so we have a little bit of perspective here?
Absolutely. So I, I can speak in the limited capacity around what curriculum and instruction supports. So one of the things that we actually use it for is for our Hill Wrap interventions. That actually requires iPads and small group intensive instructional support, so that's aligned to the science of reading supports. Additionally, many of our students will actually engage in the eye-ready diagnostic assessments using these. Um, in no capacity do we imagine that teachers would be leveraging these as a one-to-one in the entire classroom, where every student is on a technology device the entire lesson. Um, this would simply be used as a station or rotation activity, and then providing supports for academic interventions.
So there is some, do I understand correctly, there's some legislation tied to the need for these devices? Do I hear that? You said there's a requirement. Where is that requirement coming from?
So I can specifically speak to the research-based literacy intervention that we provide in our Literacy Intervention Plan is Hill Wrap. That provider does require us to have specific iPads for students to access for that intervention. That's typically anywhere from 30 to 35 minutes for a specific lesson, where the teacher and the students are utilizing the device. Additionally, we see it in small group station rotations, so if a teacher is pulling a, a group of students, the students may be engaged in an iPad for a 15, 20-minute segment, completing an activity and getting live feedback.
So these are not devices that are going home with individuals? These are stationary devices in classrooms that are being used for specific timeframes for specific lessons?
Yes, and in no way would it be that every child is on an iPad the whole class period while the teacher's doing something else. They're more used for station activities.
Okay, and then the, uh, it looks like 1,500 staff devices, can you explain a little bit around those? And I'm sorry to put people on the spot, I just think it helps to provide perspective to why this is important, and then talk about where the funding is coming from.
We're, we're on a refresh cycle, typically three years for staff devices. Uh, staff use MacBook Airs. Um, we replaced 1,500 last year for half the staff. We did a short stint over the summer, we're getting all staff on two cycles. Working with Mr. Penn and his team, we've started to stretch out the devices over a longer period of time, uh, from three years, which is what we were doing during COVID, to four and five years, uh, to one increased value, uh, to extend the time and, and reduce our overall cost.
And can you tell me what staff are using those devices for? And again, I'm all apologize, I just want us to bring perspective to what we're doing.
Sure, I, I mean, staff use it the same way you and everybody else uses their computer, for email, communication, lesson planning, uh, instruction, power school, grades, communication with families, uh, parent square.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so now, thank you. Mr. Penn, can I ask a few questions too, relating to the budget? Do we, um, have a understanding as to why the county did not fund this? Like, was it something that they were funding previously? If so, for how long? And then, do we have any understanding as to why the county did not fund it this time?
So, so we have been using, uh, budgetary line items for leases for some time now. Uh, they've been cycling down slowly, um, as the leases have been running off. Uh, there was one final payment on the last tranche that was due for the 24-25 year that's included in the budget. Um, as you may recall, we had proposed putting $5 million into our continuation budget for the device refreshes for this reason, on the expectation, I think I had shared a number of about 22.5 million dollars. That would be what it would cost to change every device in the same year. So the implication is over, Mr. Aldrich just said, a four-to-five-year period, $5 million a year would take you through that refresh cycle. Uh, in the budget development process with the county, uh, after we had done our initial presentation, Dr. Kapicki, I don't remember exactly when we were there, I want to say it was April, but I don't remember the exact timeframe. Uh, the guidance we were given was to move the $5 million out of continuation to capital, which we did. And you may recall, when I highlighted that change, when we had taken it out. Uh, and then I received a phone call, uh, from a staff member over at the county that basically said that $5 million had been cut out of the recommended budget. I was not given any additional, uh, feedback as to why. I was just made aware of it so that I knew that that $5 million was no longer included.
So we did what we were asked to do, and then it didn't get funded. Do I hear that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. That's sad. Okay, um, that, that was my question. Thanks for clarifying that.
Mr. Floyd?
Um, first I want to bring back a point that you made to make sure it doesn't get lost on people, that we are buying time with this, or you are buying time with this, uh, and we do need to figure out future years. That's, that's something that we want to make sure does not get lost on folks. A point on technology, I'm not a tech knowledge guy. I don't like it, um, you know, but, but it's part of the world that we live in. Most of us use two phones, an iPad, and a laptop to be able to do our jobs today, whether we want to or not. And our responsibility in education is to prepare the students for the world they're going to live in tomorrow, doing the best we can to do that with the tools that we have today, knowing we don't have the tools that they'll have tomorrow. So we do have a responsibility, I mean, just earlier tonight, we were, made a, um, point as a board, that the, uh, evaluation tool by hand, and, and large notebooks, and handing off in person as opposed to doing it digitally was, um, wildly inconvenient, which it is because of the world that we live and we work in today. So it's more than just a frill or a fluff, or something that we give people to have. Um, we are, we do have a responsibility to train these kids for the world they're going to live and work in, so they can be as successful as they can. And I just say that, cause I have to remind myself that a lot too, because like I said, I'm, I'm not big on technology. I just watched Terminator 2 on TV yesterday, so I'm, I'm all in, but, uh, but it is important. Uh, and it is part of our job, and it's part of our responsibility to train them for the world they're going to be living in tomorrow with the tools that we have today, not the world that we grew up in. And I need to remind myself of that here and there, so I just want to say that out loud to everybody.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I guess a lot of my questions have been, uh, discussed here, just to, so at the end of this lease, we keep these devices or we have to turn them back?
We do not.
We return them? We do return them.
We can return them.
Should we not be asking for a five-year lease instead of a four? To keep it longer?
Well, I think it would change the pricing if we do went to a five-year lease, correct? And I'm not sure these devices are ones that we want to keep for five years.
We were just talking about extending, I mean, I was just part of this conversation just two minutes ago, was trying to extend these things instead of.
And I would say that that's predominantly was related to staff laptops and, and Chromebooks, and, and those types of laptops are a little more durable than what you would find with an iPad. Uh, little fingers tend to drop these things, so you need.
Right, you, you have service agreements, and you have other staff that, that deal with that issue. That's not a, really part of that, uh, lease. But anyway, um, I do think we need to start looking for a little longer term, but we've, these are existing devices, we've got to replace them, so it's not a new ask, it's something that's got to get covered at some point, so.
That's, that's my take on it.
Ms. Lindsay?
So, am I to understand that these laptops are not one-to-one, um, in kindergarten and first grade then? Like, we won't have one for each child, or we will?
Uh, well, based on the fact that we're getting 5,300 of them, that implies about 2,700 kids per grade. That's pretty close.
Yeah, we should be, we should be, we should be close to one-to-one on this.
So my point was, that when I was bringing up the, the conversation about tech, if the kids are not using these all the time, and they're, could we not just, we don't have to have one for each child, if they're just using them in school, kind of like we had computer labs back in the day. I'm not saying we need to go that route, but I'm, what I'm saying is, we could lessen the price if we just had enough per each classroom for the, the kids that are there. If they don't need them all at the same time, and they're not doing instruction that way, then the teacher could break them up into groups, like, like you guys said, they, they go into groups. They don't have to have their very own. They would just have to log off and log back on under their user ID or whatever. Is that not possible, or just asking?
Well, I, respectfully, yes, anything is possible, and I hear you, I hear what you're saying. But I would ask that the board vote on the proposal that sits, and, and you're, the points you make are solid. Uh, but this, this has been pretty well researched and thought out and thorough, and some of the suggestions that, that have been made would really alter the price and the terms, and the interest rate, and the lease, and the, the length of it, so, for this particular purchase, I think this is a really good deal and a really good, um, opportunity for the district to, to move in this direction. Not saying anything anyone has said is wrong, I just think that right now, that for the, the time being, and, and the proposals in front of you, that we, we, our recommendation would be to vote on this.
One of the things you raised is a strategic question about how we use devices, right? So if we were to move forward with this, and we say it's designated for K and K, K and first, it doesn't mean it has to stay there. If ultimately we have the device, and we decide to redeploy the device in some way, we have the ability to do that.
Ms. Sandage?
And that's why I was asking about putting perspective on this. So for example, i- if we were tonight not approve this, come August, that's going to affect our kids somewhere.
Absolutely.
That's what I would think. So that's what I need to be able to understand perspective of to how we're using this. I do think that strategically down the line, we can look at doing something different, but we need to map that out. We don't need to pull something from other, under kids right, right now. That's my thought.
The reality is, is we have to pull those devices and retire them. They, they will not, they will present a security risk to the network if we continue to use them. That's the biggest issue.
Yeah, and I hear you. What I'm saying is, we don't need to take something away that's being utilized by our kids and our, and our teachers or, or our educators at this time. That's what I'm saying. If we need to look at this down the line, which is bringing me to my next point, how are we, like, when you decide what you're going to suggest for us, where there'll be some conversations with us, or will we understand what you propose to make sure that we're doing this long-term, um, correctly?
The finance guy doesn't propose that kind of stuff, right? I mean, it's, that's, that's a good question for the academic folks. After working with Dr. Kapicki, you come forward with a recommendation. I tend to be at the tail end of the process to say, is this a good deal for us financially?
Well, I hope they talking to you throughout the process, because we're going to need some money from somewhere, but what I'm saying is, how will this be disseminated to the board when we do? Because, uh, it's a cost that we have to take up at this point, right?
Yes, so.
And you might not have the answer to that now, but.
It's an easy answer, and they're, they're all good legitimate, they're great questions. I think the financial part, we, we've kind of addressed pretty thoroughly this evening. I think the timing is important as well, because we want to have this from when school starts. It's important that we order it now. Um, and then Mr. Penn and Mr. Aldrich have addressed the security risks to the, to the, the, the overall security of the district and the, you know, our, our infrastructure. Mo- moving forward, as we do now, sometimes the board does not see the, the, you see what's in front of you, not the result or the work that goes into it. I can tell you that this was thoroughly vetted with Ben Aldrich, the technology team, with the curriculum instruction team. Um, a lot of conversation back and forth to make sure that we're all talking the same language, we understand the needs, and with our principles as well, as to what, what do they need in the K1, um, grade levels. So there's a lot of conversation, a lot of work that goes on before it gets, gets to you. It's not an isolated conversation with Phil Penn when we get to the financial piece. So, uh, you have a lot of the, a lot of the, um, interconnecting parts working together throughout the process.
Any other questions?
I, I, I don't want to end this conversation with anyone thinking that, um, our commissioners left us wanting more, because they took care of a lot of things off our plate. They took care of our teachers, they took care of our support staff, they took care of a lot of the capital needs, or that's what we anticipate, so, I think we can handle this. I think we can handle this, because they took care of a lot of other big needs that we have. And Madam Chair, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve this.
Have a motion by Mr. Treadaway, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the lease agreement is approved as presented. Thank you, Mr. Penn.
Yeah, just before we end the meeting this evening, tonight, board, I just wanted to, uh, remind you all again, and to commend the work that Ben Aldrich has done for the Cabarrus County School System over the years. Sadly, this is Ben's last meeting, and I mean that very sincerely. Uh, since I have been here, Ben has been a trusted colleague, dedicated to working for our kids in the district, and I think he's really done a great job moving our technology department forward. Um, he walked into a yeoman's job, and has done, uh, fantastic work there since he's been there. And mainly, Ben, all around, has really been focused on kids and doing the right thing for kids in the district, and I, you know, we had our last academy meeting with Ben this morning, and it's a little, you know, it's a little, um, kind of bittersweet. You hate to see good people walk away, but you want to wish them well, and, uh, you hope that their, their next new beginning is successful. Um, Ben is going to move on to work with Dream On 3. I'm sure many of you are familiar with that, so that warms us up a little bit in our hearts, because we know we're still going to see Ben around quite a bit in the school system. But I just wanted to wish Ben well, and as I've told Ben, I know he has respected the board, and give the board an opportunity to speak to Ben as well. So Ben, I wish you all the best, and thank you for all your dedication to, to Cabarrus County School System.
Okay, board members, we'll move to eight point zero one. I'll call for a motion that our meeting be adjourned. I have a motion by Ms. Sandage, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This budget meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.